Chris Drennan, would you come forward please sir? And lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we give thanks unto thee for the many blessings that you have given us this day, for the blessing of salvation through Jesus Christ our Lord. We pray this evening for this meeting and for the business of our city. We pray that all that is done will be done with an attitude of love and serving others. We pray for each of our council members that you would give them wisdom and discernment for the decisions that need to be made. We pray for all of our elected officials that they would seek to do justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with the Lord. We pray for our nation that we would be one people united together under God. We ask that you would work in us, through us, and lead us in thy truth. Bless our nation, our state, and our city for your glory and honor. And we ask all of this in the name of our precious Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. With that, we will open the March 17th, 2015, regular city council meeting. Mrs. Vok, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Roll?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mayor, winner.
Present. All right. Agenda additions, deletions, are there any changes in the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
Motion to accept it then, please.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes five nothing. Okay, proclamations, we have two tonight. Karen Deagle, would you come forward please? This one is close to my heart, so I'm gonna be the one to get to read it. On March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older American Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for senior 60 years and older. And whereas Meals on Wheels established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of Older American Act nutrition programs, and raise awareness about the escalating problems of senior hunger in America. And whereas the 2015 observance of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs to deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas Older American Act nutrition programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Florida, have served our communities admirably for more than 40 years. And whereas voluntary drivers for Meals on Wheels programs in Florida are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare by helping to combat loneliness and isolation. And whereas the Meals on Wheels programs in Florida provides nutritious meals to seniors throughout the state and help them maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalization and/or premature institutionization. I can't even say that. And whereas Meal on Wheels programs in Florida deserves recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make the local communities our state, our nation. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida does hereby proclaim March 2015 as March for Meals Month and urges every citizen to take time to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. City Council of Vero Beach, and tomorrow I get to deliver Meals on Wheels. And I think several of us have, and Karen, we'd like to hear about it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the proclamation. Yes, Senior Resource Association is participating in the 13th Annual National March for Meals Campaign, and in doing so, this week, we have dedicated for our champions for Meals Week, and that we are having a number of different community leaders join us and participate by delivering meals with one of our volunteers. And Tammy, you did it on Monday, thank you very much, and I know, Mary, you're doing it tomorrow, we really appreciate your participation. And I'm gonna introduce my nutrition manager, and she's gonna explain a little bit more about the program.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening. My name is Leela Hippton-Stall. As Karen says, I'm the nutrition manager for the Senior Resource Association here in Vero Beach. I just wanna run through a couple little quick things. I don't know if you know this or not, but daily, we serve 200 meals per day. That's 50,000 meals per year. Unfortunately, we have 75 clients that are on the waiting list for the meals. Now, that's this month. Next month, it will grow. As you know, as seniors keep getting older and older, it's gonna grow. Also, with the seniors that receive the meal, not only do they receive a wellness and a friendly visit from our volunteers that come out and deliver the meals to them, they also get a wellness check for them, to make sure everything's okay and everything is going good. Currently, we have about 120 volunteers in Indian River County alone that delivers meals on wheels for us. Thank you so much.
Would you like to come forward, or Mrs. Turner, would you like to comment?
I'd like to make a comment. I know that seasonally, you have many more volunteers, and that then as we get into the summer months, that having people deliver meals on wheels, it's a greater need for volunteers. And I thought if you'd just let the public know if anybody would be willing, yeah, to volunteer and do it on any basis, that they can do it once a week, or a time, or what kind of commitment's involved?
The commitment for volunteers is it usually takes maybe two hours in a day to do it. We're doing it from like 10:00 in the morning till 12:00 noon is roughly the time that it takes. We encourage anyone to participate, they can do it one day a week, one day a month, whatever works for them in their schedule. In addition, we also have what we call a adopter route, and we're encouraging different businesses and organizations to lend their employees to come out one day a month, or one day a week, whatever works for them. And so if there's any organizations, businesses that would like to participate, just give us a call over at Senior Resource Association, and we'll explain everything, and it's easy and it's wonderful. It's very, as a lot of you already know, it's very helpful and heartfelt.
And people could volunteer, like, with two people that alternate the week so that that spot would be covered?
That's right. For example, if it is an organization, if they send one person, if they do say four people for the month and send one person a week, that's great. It's really what works best for the persons involved.
Thanks, it's a marvelous program, I just wanted, yes.
I appreciate that.
Put out a call for volunteers as well.
Yes, yes.
Karen, before you leave and come up and get the proclamation, I know where you are because you had a open house about six weeks ago, which was very nice, thank you for having me. But tell people where you are, how they can contact you by phone, the internet, and so on.
Sure, our phone is 569-0760.
Say that again.
And we are on 14th Street, 694 14th Street, which is in between, it's right behind Dependable Dodge, right in between US 1 and 6th Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, just for council's information, the police department has been doing this for several months, and our chief has sort of headed that effort up, and some of the patrolmen have been volunteering on a pretty regular basis, as I understand.
They're part of our adopter route program, the city police, the Felsmere City Police, Sebastian, and the sheriff's office is participating as well, so we really appreciate the support. And it's wonderful when the police do go out into the homes, it's just kind of a nice visit for our clients.
Okay, come forward.
Thank you.
You want one of us holding the t-shirts up too? Thank you.
You want one of us holding the t-shirts up too? Would you want us to hold it up? Do you have any extra ones?
Thank you. Thanks, Karen, great to have you. Thank you. You can wear tomorrow if you want. Thank you.
Mr. Roll?
Brian Chandless, would you come forward? We have a proclamation to read. Whereas diagnosed with cystic fibrosis at just two months old, many told Brian Chandless that he would live a sedimentary lifestyle, slowly suffocate, and never live long enough to graduate high school. And whereas originally from Butler, Pennsylvania, Brian currently teaches health and physical education in Vero Beach, Florida, and has never looked at his CF as a burden, but just a part of his life. And whereas having CF has propelled Brian to do more and push himself further because he never wanted to be held back. It drives him to inspire others with his own determination and his message. The only disability one will face is a mentality of "I can't." And whereas Brian's first extended bike ride in 2007, 2007, was a 2,000 mile trip from Pittsburgh to Tallahassee and back, which raised $14,000 for Cystic Fibrosis Foundation. And whereas since 2007, 2007, Brian has cycled thousands of miles, completed half and a full Ironman challenges, marathons, and a tough mud or obstacle course. And whereas on Saturday, June 13th, Brian and his team will cycle 3,400 miles from San Francisco, California, to Annapolis, Maryland, stopping in major cities to inspire those living with CF by telling his story of triumph. And whereas cystic fibrosis is a recessive genetic disorder that primarily affects the respiratory and digestive systems, caused blocked airways or preventing food from being broken down, inhibits the absorption of nutrients. And whereas while there is not yet a cure, research can help lessen and damage and lengthen lifespans through treatment and medication. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby recognize Brian Chandless for his commitment to increase awareness, education, determination, and for raising money for CF community to help find a cure for this debilitating disorder.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy St. Patrick's Day. I wanna thank you so much for this opportunity to talk a little bit about my ride this summer. But before I do, I'd like to share a little bit about my story, and then I think the ride this summer will make a little bit more sense. So you got to hear a little bit about what cystic fibrosis is, and I struggled with this as a child because it was tough to relate that to how that was gonna relate to others that didn't have cystic fibrosis. So one of the ways that I dealt with this is I never told anyone that I had cystic fibrosis, and furthermore, I would never do anything like what I'm doing tonight because I feared how others would treat me. Now, I love these opportunities because it only gets us one step closer to finding a cure for cystic fibrosis. So very quickly, I learned to choose my attitude whenever it came to having cystic fibrosis, and I tell my students, who a couple are here today at Charter, I tell them that it's not the obstacles that you're given, but how we overcome those obstacles, it's so much more important. Whenever I went away to college, I started to find this attitude of being positive, and I found what worked for me through nutrition and exercise. And I really wanted to share that message with other people, and I kept thinking of how I could do something like that. And in college, in class one day in Western Pennsylvania, at Sliprock University, I sat in a U.S. and Canada class, and I looked over at a giant Florida ceiling map of the U.S., and I remember thinking, I'm gonna ride my bike from Pittsburgh to Florida and back, and I don't care what anybody else says about it. So I don't remember what the professor was going on in monotone about that day, but I do remember that's when Brian's Ride was born. So I started telling everybody that I was gonna do this, many people said, "Well, I don't know if you'll be able to do that." So I was really happy whenever we were able to complete that trip, and we raised $14,000 for cystic fibrosis research. So while raising that money was really important for the cause, the press that we received, and being able to inspire others with cystic fibrosis, I think is even so much more important. So this summer, we will go on a little bit longer of a trip, and we will ride from San Francisco to Annapolis, Maryland, and again, that's to raise money for the cause, awareness for the disease, and then also to inspire others with CF. The way I describe it, it's just like a workday, maybe not to some people, but we'll ride about 100 miles a day, so we'll wake up early, ride for four or so hours, eat lunch, do it again, and then have dinner, go to sleep, do the same thing the next day. I have a very short video to share with you guys that I think kind of pulls everything They told me I was sick, and that I was different. My family was scared for me. I wanted to be like the other kids, but I wasn't. And an anger grew inside of me, but I didn't know anybody. 2,045 miles from Pittsburgh to Tallahassee, 140 miles in the Coeur d'Alene Ironman, 2,000 miles from Pennsylvania to New England and back, so the 70,000 people in the world like me may live past the age of 40. In June of 2015, 3,400 miles on a bicycle from San Francisco to Annapolis, so others like me can be empowered, because the only disability one will face is the mentality So we have already received an amazing amount of support from the community. We've had 5Ks, we've had meet and greets, we've had all kinds of things to try to raise support for our ride that we're doing this summer, but we still do have a long way to go to meet our budget to be able to do the ride this summer. So if you would like to help, you can go to donate.briansride.org, and there's a crowdfunding page that is very simple, you click donate, and you're able to donate and help us that So I wanna thank you so much again for this opportunity, and at this time, I'll take any questions that anyone has.
Brian, one thought is when Randy gives you the proclamation, you might bring your students up. Another one is where do you live? Where are you from?
Where am I originally from?
Well, where do you live now?
I live in Vero. Yeah, no.
Where do you live in Vero? Oh, you don't wanna tell us?
My students are here again, remember?
You don't have to tell us, that's okay.
Yeah.
It's okay. But you live in Vero, we're pleased to have you here.
Thank you.
Inspiration.
Thank you.
I guess have your students come up then.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Your inspiration, that's great.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's very good.
I like you better without the beard.
You see how handsome he is now?
Why don't you picture one?
You're welcome to. Oh my goodness.
Thank you.
Best of luck, one for that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll crowd in here.
You guys, you get in the middle, Brian.
Let's put him in the middle, yeah.
What are you doing this summer?
Well, those are two impressive proclamations. Brian, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for what you're doing. All right, we'll move on to public comment, and we have two scheduled presentations. The first is the Public Resources Management Group Rate Study. Henry, do you come forward, identify yourself, and go forward. And Cindy too, if that's appropriate.
Just as a preface, if you recall, late last fall, we put out an RFP for a consultant to help us do essentially two things. Examine rate sufficiency in the electric utility, which the city has been managing itself since 2009, 2010, which is the last time we had a formal rate study, and also to look at our rate structure, both now and with an eye toward the improvements and reductions we're planning to make here in the future. And so in response to that RFP, Public Resources Management Group was chosen as the number one ranked firm. We placed them on contract, and we have with us today Henry Thomas and Murray Hamilton, who are going to give you a presentation on the results of essentially the first phase of that effort. This presentation was given to both the Utility Commission and the Finance Commission earlier today, probably in more detail than we'll go into right now, since many of you saw it then too. But we did have recommendations from both commissions that we'll share with you at the conclusion of the presentation, and with that, I'll give it to Henry.
Thank you, Cindy. Good evening. Again, Henry Thomas, Public Resources Management Group. I wanted to start by talking a little bit about the engagement itself and what we're attempting to accomplish in this, and it really has a number of layers or steps to it. The first step was to look at where you stand today, and to certain that current rates are sufficient. And then, subsequent to that, we are gonna do a five-year forecast of what we think rates are gonna look like. That forecast will start with a base case, which will talk about being business as usual. If you don't make any changes to the way you operate, what's gonna happen to your rates over the next several years? In addition to looking at monthly user rates, we were asked to look at the miscellaneous service charges within your fee structures, and we've pretty much completed that. It's at the stage now that city staff is reviewing it, we've got a little more work to bring that to fruition, but the main part of that is done. In addition to the current situation in rates, we also were asked to look at the cost of service, and I'm gonna go into that with a little bit more time, but again, this is a technical method of looking at how the revenue requirements of the system should be allocated to different customer classes. But one of the things with respect to the current situation that I was asked to look at, and it really underlies the recommendation we have for action today, because we're really not ready for action yet. But there is one thing we'd like to talk about, and it's not an essential thing, but I think it cleans up a lot, and that is how you account for power costs through your power cost adjustment versus the costs in the base rates. And what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna, you've all had your package for a while, so if you have any questions about any part of it, stop me anytime and ask, but I'm gonna jump to the real pertinent stuff that's in here to share with you what, one, what we're asking you to consider and why, and then some of the other results we have to share at this point in time. So I'm gonna go to slide six, and what that shows is in the left-hand column, we have the city's costs for the FY budget year, 15 budget year. And that is, you have annual revenues of 92.1 million, annual costs of 91.7 million. That's a small surplus of $400,000. So that's the big picture. Then, we look at these costs through the rate structure, the attempt we use is to recover the power costs and the base rates are really a separate set of costs. So the city costs, to be specific, are the city's distribution and administration and non-fuel production costs. That's what was put in the base rate when we did this study five years ago. Right now, those costs are $30.8 million. The revenues from base rates are $42.4 million. So there's actually an $11.6 million surplus on the base rate side. Now, the reason for that is we've significantly reduced your operating expenses, you've closed a couple of the units over at the power plant, you have less staff today than you did, plus the capital investment that was going on has been cut back. Part of the reason with those units being shut down, you don't have the capital needs for those plants at this time. But the city's done a good job of, compared to the forecast we did five years ago, the costs are much lower, on the city's side, I'll refer to it, than we had anticipated. Then with respect to purchase power costs, your total annual revenues are 49.7 million for FY 15, the power costs are 60.9. That's an $11.2 million deficit. So the two are offsetting, and let me explain why that is, is that technically, we could have refiled the rates, lowered base rates, and had a higher power cost adjustment. What Ms. Lawson has been doing, and I think has done it well, because you're currently in a sound position, is she's been managing the whole picture. So when she does her quarterly updates, she looks at what kind of power cost charge I need to have on my adjustment on my bill to make sure that my cash reserves don't fall away. About the 24 months prior to the time we did the last study, the city actually was, it was paying about one to one and a half million dollars more a month than they were collecting for power costs. And if you go back and look at the balance sheets for that time, we went through a whole lot of cash, and suddenly, we were trending to zero, and that's about the time we did the rate study. So now you're looking at $30 million in reserves, $17 million of them are unrestricted, and so that money's available for contingencies, hurricanes, whatever, to support your power costs, but that's a pretty sound position. It's roughly 80 days of O and M. We'd like to see it 60 to 90, 90 preferable, but 80 is not a bad place to be. In addition, with respect to performance, you also have covenants from your bond resolution that focus mainly, they don't really require you to have a certain cash balance, but certainly the credit rating agencies look at your cash position, but the lenders themselves have a rate covenant that says we have to have a certain amount of revenue available to pay our debt. So after the expenses are counted, we look at our net revenues after operating expenses, and we compare that to our annual debt, and they're looking for that number to be higher. Well, right now, those revenues available to pay the debt are two and a half times the debt service. Now, things like the transfer to the general fund, according to the flow of funds in the bond resolution, you have to pay the debt before you can make that transfer. So that helps count and create that two and a half times coverage, as well as any internally funded capital that you fund from rates, because again, capital isn't an operating expense. So if we've got some operating capital, we refer to it as, and we pay those and build that into revenue requirements, that's what helps us make the coverage. Now, the bondholder puts this in there because they're looking for comfort that they're gonna get repaid, they're also looking for comfort that you have cash flow to reinvest in the system, because part of being repaid is not just the rates you charge, but that the system's being operated as a going concern, and they know it's gonna be around and produce revenues. So this is the lender requirement. So as far as those objective criteria, where you're at today, you're starting in a sound position. Now, the plan is, is that you've hired Mr. Wright and Mr. Harrington, and they're looking at your power supply arrangement. And if there's any place that there's any dollars that can really make a difference, it's in power supply costs. We all know that, because it's roughly 60, over 60% of our overall revenue requirements are power supply costs. So they're looking at that, you've got another firm, Power Services, that are gonna look at internal operations, and when we come back, we're gonna have a base case business as usual forecast that says, if you don't do anything, here's what the rates look like to us, where they're gonna go. However, if we implement these changes, and we'll have some alternatives I'm sure to look at, then this is what would happen to the overall rate picture. At that point, we'll also have a cost of service analysis and rates that would go along with those options to lower them. But at this point, it's a little premature to start looking at things that I'll call it rearrange the chairs on the deck, because at this point, we'd rather wait until we have some rate reductions to start shifting bills around. So the recommendation that we wanna talk about today is straightening out this internal accounting of the power costs. Now, this power cost formula is on file with the PSC, and this was done subsequent to the last rate study, and I'd like to take you to it. And that's on page nine. So the current formula in the tariff says that the costs that we collect through the adjustment charge on the bill includes fuel. Now, one of the things that we've been discussing is staff, on your bill today, you call it fuel, but it's not just fuel. So that confuses the customers. So they're going to And that's on page nine. So the current formula in the tariff says that the costs that we collect through the adjustment charge on the bill includes fuel. Now, one of the things that we've been discussing is staff, on your bill today, you call it fuel, but it's not just fuel. So that confuses the customers. So they're going to change that nomenclature, that word on the bill, to purchase power. Okay? Because that's more accurate assessment of what it is. But in actuality, it is the fuel consumed in the city's units, which is very little today, purchase power, both fuel and demand costs and energy costs, transmission costs associated with the jointly owned units, and your power arrangement with OUC. And if you have any off-system sales, we take that revenue and back it off. So we take that cost, those total dollars, divide by the sales, and that number right now is roughly $86 per megawatt hour. All right? The, the issue is that we're only charging 69.50 on that line on the bill. Now, what we grappled with is, since we want, since we believe there's some promise of lower rates in the near term, and we want to factor that into the overall rate changes we make, what we struggled with is, okay, how can we get this power cost accounting correct and at this point not affect anybody's bill? So what we came up with is the easiest way to do that, so that nobody's bill changes one penny from where we're at today, is historically municipal governments that owned electric systems and even IOUs, the way they would do cost of service is, when we do the study, we would roll the entire $86 into the base rate. And then the adjustment charge would be this real small number that would vary around that. That's how we did it a decade or more ago. Then, the IOUs in Florida were required to take their fuel cost line and make it separate totally. Well, the last time that we did this study here at Vero Beach, I was asked to remove all the power costs and put them on a separate line. And we did that. The problem is, those power costs were lower then. Relative to your, if, today, if we tried to make this change in any other way than the way I'm going to recommend, it would mean that somebody's bill would be a little higher, somebody's bill would be a little lower. We don't think it's time to consider that yet. So what we'd like to do is acknowledge the fact that $16.50 per megawatt hour of base rates is really going to fuel. And the way we do that is the proposed formula at the bottom here, where what we do is, we take the same formula and we say minus the base purchase power expense of 16.50. That's at least acknowledging the subsidy that's going on between base rates and adjustments. And we can file this tariff with the PSC, shouldn't have any problem being approved. And you won't have to, you, your bill, other than if we change the nomenclature, the bill will be identical to what it is today. But it allows us, one, and I thought Mr. O'Connor had a good way of putting it, it gives us a template to evaluate these future issues. And it lets us document and acknowledge this $16.50 that we're using for base rates. Because other than Cindy's analysis that she does each quarter, we really don't document this anyway. And we've got this tariff out there that says we're doing it a certain way, and we're not right now. So we want to clean that up. And that's what we're asking you to take action on right now, is to allow us to refile the adjustment tariff to acknowledge this subsidy from base rates. And that way, it'll give it, while it doesn't break it totally out on the bill, it will give it transparency. So now, somebody can go to these charts, these formulas, and say, here's your power costs. There's 16.50 in the base rates, there's 69.50, the total power cost is $86. And it's very clear. And the math works. So that's what we really are asking you to do at this point in time. Because again, we wanted to do it in a way that was revenue neutral, not only for the system as a whole, but for every customer's bill. There won't be any bill impacts if you do this. Now, the other thing that I wanted to share with you today is the cost of service. So I'm real quick going to share the process with you, because I don't believe we had too many folks here today. Some of the, one of the committee members I recognized from five years ago, but there's a lot of new faces here today. So I want to make sure you understand when I'm talking about cost of service, what it is we're doing. So we've got this $92 million in costs. And historically, I will say that when I came into this business 37 years ago, most municipal governments charged a very competitive rate with their contiguous IOU. I remember Fort Pierce used to be within $1 of Florida Power and Light. However, the way they managed to do that is they charged their small commercial and large commercial customers well above the cost of service. And in 1978, the federal government passed a law called the Public Utility Regulatory Policy Act. We refer to it as PERPA. And that law said that rates should be based on cost of service. And they didn't give exceptions for municipal governments and co-ops. Well, in Florida, these entities, as you know, are not regulated, or were not before 1978. So the Florida PSC, in order to implement PERPA, met with the cities and the electric cooperatives, which is another nonprofit group. And they said, look, we've got to implement some form of cost of service regulation. So at that time, all the participants in this rate hearing, if you will, agreed to a, there's a consent order that everybody signed that said the PSC has the right to regulate your cost of service. So they don't care about your $92 million revenue requirement. They're never going to comment on that. They don't have an opinion on the costs that are in there, on the wages you pay. That's not their jurisdiction. But how you take that $92 million and how you develop residential rates versus small commercial rates versus large power rates, that's what their jurisdiction concerns. So given that, we need to do cost of service studies to get our rates approved and through the, the overall process. Well, the way that works is we start out by, we take the costs and we classify them into categories. Costs associated with meter reading and billing, we refer to as fixed customer-related costs. Costs that are energy or fuel or energy-related. The demand charges in your purchase power agreements are demand-related. Let me say this, real quick. When we bill customers, we bill residential customers a base monthly charge. That's technically to cover reading the meter, issuing a bill, and hopefully amortizing some of the costs of that meter and service installation. And then we charge an energy charge along with the adjustment, which is energy-based. That, that adjustment charge is based on energy. Similarly, for the non-demand class, we do the same thing, customer charge, energy charge. As the customers get bigger, we charge a third charge as a demand charge. But when you look at those rates, you'll see that the energy usage rates are lower. The reason they are is because we're collecting some of the same costs that residents and small businesses are paying through their energy charge, we're collecting it in this demand charge. And essentially, what that demand charge is, is it's based on the customer's highest usage within the month for a 30-minute period. Because we can't store power, we have to be able to meet instantaneous demand. And so that demand charge reflects their highest use during the month for a given 30-minute period. So that's factored into your, your larger commercial rates. And as we understand it, FPNL is considering maybe even for large, very large residential customers, putting a demand meter on them. I don't know where that'll go. It's an interesting concept. Theoretically, in the past, the reason we didn't have demand charges on users like residential and small commercial is they didn't use enough energy to justify the extra meter expense, because it does cost more to meter it that way. But from, once we assign the costs, we come up with different factors. And we use those factors to allocate the cost to the classes, and then we design the rates. So let me just real quickly share with you, again, I want to make sure we get some cost of service information out here tonight. We, the categories are customer service-related. We, we weight those by the number of accounts for each class. Customer facility-related, we weight the number of counts by the cost of the meter and service. Demand-related, we look at the load characteristics of the class, and I'm going to come back to that. Energy-related is just the energy sales. So the real driver, the thing that makes the biggest difference in cost of service are the demand relationships. So what are we talking about here? We're talking about who contributes to the demands that then cause you to incur power costs through your various arrangements. We don't know that, because all, we, we don't meter every hour. Okay? And if we had to do one of these studies to meet the PERPA requirements, it would cost you multiples of what you're paying for just a rate study. Well, what we know is that the investor on utilities have to routinely file load research data. So what we did was, we looked at what FPNL filed, and we used their load factors that they use in their cost of service studies. So what we're saying is, we're making our class characteristics match up to our contiguous IOU's class characteristics. The PSC likes this idea, and it'll, it's valid for cost of service work. So that's what we use. So that being said, just real quickly, I want to point out, the reason cost of service matters is that when you look at the residential class, load factor, and I don't know if this is something we talk about in council here a lot, but load factor is the ratio of average demand to peak demand. So the more you use relative to your peak demand, the more efficient you are in effect, the better you utilize the capacity that you're demanding for a given period. So the higher the load factor, the lower demand costs relative to energy costs. So as you can see in this chart, residential has a 62% load factor, large power has a 76.8% load factor. What that means is, they use more energy on average relative to their demand than residents do. And as a result, they're going to get a lower overall average cost per kilowatt hour through the rate structure that we designed. So just to give you real quick how some of these factors play, on this chart, 83% of the accounts are residential, but they only have 49% of the energy sales. And that, but because they're the poorest load factor, they're getting 54% of the demand costs. Contrast that to large, general service demand, they're 2% of the counts, they're 36% of the energy sales, but because they have a better assumed load factor, they're only 32% of the demand costs. So your cost structure matters, what fixed costs and what variable costs are. And then again, the big driver is the demand costs. So one other thing that, that I want to share with you, just as a piece of information, is in your existing customer profile, this chart just shows the residential class, and it shows that 31% of the bills, on average, last year fell at 500 kilowatts or less. Then another 31% are between 500 and 1,000. Now, if you'll look over in the right-hand column, we talk about the energy bill. So in that first block, we only billed 8% of the total energy, in the second block, 22%. But look at the above 2,500 block, they're only 6.45% of the bills, but they use almost 24% of the energy. So that's something to be aware of when we come back and talk about rate designs. Because again, we talk about the average, the system average last year was 1,035. But if you look at just those that use less than, all the bills for 1,000 and less, those first two lines only average about 500. If you go to that above 2,500 and look at those 21,000 bills, they're averaging about 4,800. So again, you've got a lot of different users out there, and, and so we address that in, in our next step in the rate structuring. But this just recaps the, the cost of service by the categories. I'm going to go to the final answer. Basically, on this chart, it shows the base case cost of service. Now, even though we're not, we, we didn't come in here anticipating that your rates were in perfect sync with cost of service. One, your cost structure's changed significantly since five years ago. But that being said, this, these tolerances here are well within what the PSC would accept as, we could file a cross-the-board rate change, and we wouldn't have to do these things. Because literally, the method and the accuracy of the analysis is within the tolerance that we're looking at here. And in fact, IOUs, they have a slightly different test. They look at each class's rate of return, but they're allowed a leeway of up to 5% before they even have to comment on why. So again, if we file, let's say we file a 2% rate decrease or a 2% rate increase. I can assure you, we could file it across the board to all customers, and they wouldn't question this. But we can set the rates based on costs if we'd like. And what that shows is, at least at current cost levels, residential is paying about 3% too little, and the two commercial classes are paying between 3% and 4% too much. So if you follow cost of service, you would adjust those things. Our view of it is, why start adjusting now when we know we're looking at, hopefully, reducing rates? If we can reduce rates, then this whole thing is less painful to get through, and we can accommodate some cost of service adjustment if we want to. And even if we decide to do the adjustment, you don't have to do it all at once. Because one of the other principles that they talk about at the PSC is to avoid rate shock. So even if we filed this and said we'd like to do it, they'd probably suggest we spread it out over time. So that's the base cost of service. There's no action we're asking you to take on it. We're not asking you to make these adjustments today. But we're going to come back with a revised cost of service based on the new arrangements and the new costs, and you can at least see how it changed from where we're at today. So that's pretty much what I have for you as a presentation. Just real quickly, the things that we would, would observe and recommend is, one, your current base rates and power cost adjustment are adequate to meet your budget. You're in budget balance, that's a good thing. And if you really don't want to do anything, you can leave it at that until we get into subsequent phases of that. I'm going to skip the second one for a moment. We will come back and prepare a five-year forecast, we're working on that. But we'd like to have simultaneous with that presentation, some alternative results to present about where we can go. And we will update the, the cost of service, we'll bring back the miscellaneous charge recommendations and all of that. But at this point, that second recommendation, I said the city may wish to update its purchase power adjustment clause to formally recognize that $16.50 per megawatt hour in base rates is helping us pay for our power costs. What we'd like to do, and the, both committees today voted to, they both had motions to support that recommendation. So we'd like to go ahead and clean up this power cost accounting. It's more of an internal issue than it is external, but we do have this tariff on file, and we'd like to make the tariff follow what we're actually practicing. And, and so we'd like to recommend that we take that action right away. It won't have a penny impact on anybody's bills, but it'll give us this template going forward to evaluate against. And it'll make Cindy feel a lot better about, when she does her quarterly analysis, she knows that this is now all documented and on paper and in the, in the regulatory requirements as opposed to an analysis that she does each quarter. And she's been doing great, but the only way she could have done it differently is if she followed the formula, we would have had $86 power costs. You don't want that when your base costs are over recovering. And, you know, so she was on, she was making the call to lower the power costs because she know you, she knew you could. Now, unfortunately, when we were back five years ago, we were, we weren't, we didn't have base rates that were in surplus, and that's why so much money left the system, because we weren't fully recovering our costs. That being said, if you have any questions, I'll...
Yeah, I'll, I think we should entertain questions, and then we should have a motion from somebody on council to implement the second bullet up here. Go ahead with your question, Ms. Turner.
Now, well, Ms. Lawson said that at the end of the presentation, they would put the, offered the discussions from the utility and the finance commission and their recommendations. I would like to hear those comments as well.
And essentially, both commissions voted unanimously to endorse that second bullet as their, as their motion and their recommendation, that we, that we make that adjustment to the purchase power cost calculation at this time, and then we'll go forward with the next phases as we come forward, so.
Any other comments or recommendations from those?
No formal motions or recommendations from those two commissions, other than that one as a motion and a vote. Certainly, there was lots of, they heard a much longer version of this presentation, and there was lots of good discussion, but, but the only actual recommendation and action they took at this time was that second bullet.
Thank you.
Also, just to let you know, during those discussions at both of those commissions, we talked about changing that fuel number, fuel title on the bill to purchase power. The fact of the matter is, now we're taking unit four offline sometime in May, so therefore, we're getting out of the fuel purchase business, except when we do it through our purchase power cost. So it really is putting it in line with the, in the timing that we're really getting out of fuel purchase of business.
And I think that would provide some clarity to the bills, because I think we, yeah.
Absolutely. Because we have a lot of customers, when the gas bill at the pump goes down and they're paying less for their car, why isn't my fuel cost going down on my electric bill? And so it's, unfortunately, there's no relationship.
Would someone like to make a motion to implement number two?
Sure. I'll, I'll make a motion to implement number, this second paragraph here.
I'll second.
All right. Do we need a voice vote, Mrs. Bach?
Yes, the voice vote's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five, nothing. Anything else for Henry?
Okay.
Any public, any public comment to Henry's presentation?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that really going through, I mean, there was no opportunity for rate reduction from what you've seen. I mean, our costs are being covered, I mean, we're in balance with budget-wise, but I mean, it's not like the, the city is charging excessive rates, you know, and putting money on the side. I mean, we're...
Right. To be quite, quite honest with you, as far as operating expense, that's not my thing. So, so there could be some costs that could be reduced, but I, I'm not going to be the one to do that. That's why you've got these other firms that are doing this work. And so my, my goal is within, when I'm looking at your current budget, it's in balance. The transfer policy meets the historical 6%. The transfer policy meets the historical 6%. All the things we're, I mean, clearly, the operating expenses and capital expenditures are much lower than what we were anticipating five years ago. So, it looks good to me. Uh, it's going to be these other teams that give us that fruit for lower rates. And what I'm going to do is factor them through the process so you can see what the bill impacts are at the customer level.
And within your analysis, you looked at, uh, recurring renewal and replacement project costs, that we've been funding that through rates. And that was, I just want to confirm that that was a good idea, not to be going into debt for R and R.
Okay. What we'll, the way we're going to deal with this is, we're going to bring back options to look at, and we can evaluate that. But I will say this, I I will say this, is that even though some of these reoccurring assets may have a life more than a year, if you're spending a certain amount of money every month, every year that recurs, like meters and and, if you borrowed that every single year, eventually, you would pay more. You'll get a short-term benefit for a long-term higher rate. However, if you did it for a short period of time, that could be, that could be a strategy that some might use. Uh, a few years back, Stewart borrowed a whole bunch of money for their R and R expenditures. And they borrowed it all at once and did, but the reason they did that is they were way behind on doing it. So, we will evaluate that impact, and you can look, and we'll bring you back what the rate consequences of different strategies are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Turner. It's good to see you. I was here when you did the rate study back five years ago, and so it was nice to have you back.
Well, I'm glad to be back. I I was telling Cindy after you hired me that, when I look around, that, uh, that nobody that I worked with back then is here anymore. So, I was proud to be left standing, if you will.
Thank you very much.
I think this comment's appropriate, too. Of Henry, thank you for what you've done and what you will be doing, which may be more important than what you've done. But I I I think we need to congratulate Cindy on running a ship the way she has.
Absolutely.
Rather informally, and and have this kind of result. I was kind of nervous about what Henry would find, to tell you the truth. Congratulations, lady.
I wasn't.
Uh, okay. I guess we are on to, uh, Mr. Wright at this point in time. He's going to give us an update on electric utilities, whatever that means.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens. As always, I'm glad to be back. Robert Shuffel Wright, I'm your special utility counsel, and.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My brain.
Just a few things, uh, well, yeah, just a few things this evening. Uh, I think you probably know that the county did file their notice of appeals in the, uh, of the Public Service Commission's declaratory statement orders yesterday. Uh, that starts the clock for them to file their initial brief, which is 70 days from yesterday. And we'll see what happens, and we'll be prepared to respond to, uh, to whatever briefs they file.
And it's true, the PSC has to respond, too.
Oh, yes. The PSC is the, is really the principal appellate. It's, uh, it's Indian River County versus Florida Public Service Commission. But we are an appellate, appeli, I said appellate, I misspoke, appeli. There, county's the appellate. Uh, we are also an appeli.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. Thank you. Um, there's, there's no real news on the, uh, shores litigation. That's still an abatement of bayance, and we're, uh, working toward getting ready to go to the, uh, mediate, next mediation session, which will be on or about May 1st. We still don't know definitively when that's going to be. We're waiting to hear, uh, the mediator's availability. The town wants to have it on May 1st, and I don't have any objection to having it on May 1st. Um, just, uh, but we, at at last check, Carlos was not available on May 1st. So, we're looking at whatever it turns out to be. Okay. So, what I really wanted to spend most of my time talking about this evening is, uh, asking you for authorization to go forward to negotiate definitive agreements with OUC based on the November 25th, uh, discussion points that they gave us. To recap, we evaluated four power purchase cases. Stick with the existing PPA, accept their October 20th offer, accept their November 25th, uh, proposal, and cancel the contract, terminate the contract, and go to the market or go, go bear to the market, as I sometimes say. And we evaluated those under three different gas price scenarios. Uh, base reference gas price scenario, a high gas price scenario, and a low gas price scenario. Using the reference gas prices, both the, uh, October 20th offer and the existing PPA did not look good at all. The, uh, November 25th set of terms and the go to, go to market came out about even. If one were to look at the high gas scenario, then then the, uh, go take the November 25th proposal looks significantly better than the, uh, than the go to, go to the market scenario. So, that's what, that that's what the numbers show. As I discussed in the memo that I distributed last month and that we discussed then, and I'll recap again, there, this is a long-term billion-dollar decision, plus or minus, in terms of all the total amount we're going to pay for bulk power supply over the next 15 years. It's certainly a long-term hundreds of millions of dollars decision. And there are risks, whatever route you choose. That's, it's the nature of the beast. It's like, you know, it's like OUC building the Stanton plants. They were good plants. They were thoroughly evaluated by the PSC. There was challenges in the litigation to, uh, to get them permitted. They were good plants. They served well for years. They still serve well. The problem is that in 2008, 2009, the economic problem they face today is that in that time period, world energy markets shifted dramatically, and then we had the Great Recession compounded by the advent of fracking and apparently very serious competition in the supply of natural gas that's forced the plot, forced the price of gas to the seller, which leaves expensive plants, with high fixed cost plants that burn coal underwater. But it was a good decision 30 years ago. You know, there, there are risks. You know, we could make one decision, and the price of gas could go to $12, as it did in the summer of 2008. And we could say, oh, whoa, I wish I'd had that other V8. We could, um, make another decision, the price of gas could stay low, and we could take that off. The, the point is, this is decision, this is significant decision-making under conditions of uncertainty that that involves lots of money. And you just have to make the best decision you can based on what it is possible to know. Some factors that are out there are environmental cost factors, and we've, you know, we just looked to OUC straight in the eyes and said, "Are you guys going to spend significant money to install SCR or some other environmental upgrade?" They said no. We asked FMPA, "Are you going to issue new debt associated with the Stanton project?" They said no. Is there a scenario under which they might have to do so? Yes. It's, I'll, I'll just brief it. If OUC were mandated to install environmental upgrade equipment, FMPA and the project participants in Stanton have to come up with their proportionate share. If, on the other hand, DEP or the EPA, DP by delegated authority, were to say, "Well, you either have to upgrade the environmental control equipment or shut it down," uh, it's not so clear. And my, you know, preliminary conversations with FMPA indicate that they would say, "That's not a requirement, that's a choice." So, we'll, we'll see how it comes out. But it, it, these are, you know, anecdotal examples of of risks that are out there. Among the good things that taking the OUC offer, uh, November offer would give the city are are these. OUC has quite possibly the greatest fuel mix flexibility of any utility in Florida. I think that's true. Um, Duke has some. I think OUC has more as a percentage of their generation. OUC can flip from producing 70% of their electricity using gas, 30% coal, to the other way, 70% coal, 30% gas, if prices change. That is a risk mitigation benefit of going with OUC. Additionally, if going with OUC, we would have a known for nine years through 2023, which is one of the other, uh, features of the November 25th offer that is viewed by many as a benefit, and that is, it gets us into a longer-term market situation sooner. But we know what the demand charges will be for the next nine years. That, that, that protects us against the supply current, to be blunt, the current supply glut shrinking to the point the capacity costs go higher than we think they're going to. Uh, that, that's a protection. You know, could things turn out differently? Could demand get softer and softer? Could, could the solar renaissance, uh, or the solar growth take over and and the supply glut grows so that the market capacity costs are less than we think they're going to be? That could happen. Uh, but it does provide us upside protection in the demand costs. So, with all of that, we're inclined to go with, and we would recommend going with the OUC November 25th offer. We are still working with them on a couple of tweaks, including trying to, uh, talk them into letting us lower our billing demand based on the fact that the highest billing demand we've had since 2010 was in February of this year, and it was only 167, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I said billing demand, not true. Highest peak demand we had since 2010 was only 167 megawatts, yet they want to base our bills for next year on a peak demand of 175. Uh, and if you save eight, you save almost nine, because it's eight times 115, plus 15% for reserve margins. So, we're working on that, and we're working on, uh, also getting them to agree that we can implement an interruptible rate, where we could use standby generation that we already have at existing facilities, and maybe our customers could, too, to shave our billing demand even further and save some money there. And talking further with them about, hopefully, better locking down fuel costs. They did say, when we met with them last week, they will hedge for us. We need to confirm exactly what that means, but that's a detail to be carried out in the, in the negotiations. Uh, both the Utilities Commission and the Finance Commission unanimously, uh, supported in our meetings earlier today, our request to you this evening, which is that you authorize us, and that's Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Harrington, and myself, to proceed toward negotiating definitive agreements with OUC based on the November 25th proposal.
A question about the transmission. You've covered it today in the two, uh, commissions, but I think it's useful to cover tonight.
Yes. The, uh, OUC has confirmed that they have, uh, the full 54 megawatts of transmission capacity available on the OUC system to accommodate the peaking purchase starting October 1st, uh, to set the stage. There are two wheels, two, two transmissions that are necessary. We've got to get the power from OUC's generators to the FPL-OUC interconnect, which is the delivery point at which, uh, uh, OUC delivers it in FPL's transmission system for delivery to us. So, we've got the OUC system wheel, and we've got the FPL system wheel. The transmission service request has been filed, submitted to FPL, and we're waiting on them to do their review pursuant to their, uh, per federal, federally approved transmission tariff.
And there's a specific timeline. If there's not a study, it's 30 days. And if there is a study, it's, I hear it was 60 or 90 days?
I, I think if they have to do a study, it's up to 60 days. And then, it's some months beyond that, maybe six months beyond that, if they do have to do a system impact study. You know, we're knocking wood and hoping we'll get an answer before 60 days.
What you're asking, I, I'm going to try to paraphrase it. You correct me if I'm wrong. What you're asking us is, your first choice of the op, you're ruling out two options, namely, staying where we are with the high cost and the October offer, right? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you're, you're saying that what you want to do is take the November offer and see whether you can bring us back, bring us back an agreement that would be acceptable to us, vis a vis walking, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, the difference between the October and the November was, uh, the October, was that, if I'm, if I'm right, is that 14 years out, 2029? Was when the OUC contract was supposed to end initially?
Yeah. 16 through, 2016 through 2029 is 14 years.
And then, the November offer was going to end in nine years. What was it?
Correct. 12/31/2023.
Okay.
The, the demand charges are significantly less in both of those offers than than the rates in the current PPA. The demand charges are a bit less in the October offer than in the November offer. The October offer included the, uh, option in OUC's favor to buy our, by our St. Lucie power pursuant to a PPA. Uh, and there was some, uh, negative reaction on that locally, and we went back to them and asked them for a shorter term and no St. Lucie option. And as I suggested when we talked about this a while back, the, the very, you know, modest pushback, I think, was, well, okay, but the demand charges are going to be a little bit higher than they were.
Okay. So, the November offer buys us freedom to 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 change sooner than the, than the October one?
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
Well, I, I think it's probably, you know, having read the OUC PPA and all of the FMP, FMPA PPAs, FOMPs, I guess they call themselves, I mean, you're talking about long-involved agreements, these purchase power agreements. And what I think you're indicating to us, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you feel that there are, there are good odds that you can bring back agreement with all of the conditions that would go in such agreement. I mean, you know, it'll, it'll be a 30 or 40 powerage agreement, that you feel that it's worth pursuing that and seeing if you can bring that back to us. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Exactly right.
But if there is a chance you will not be able to bring it back to us, is that correct?
Well, there's, I'll bring back whatever it is. There's a chance that won't be acceptable to you.
Ah, touche.
I, there was no, there was no attempt to hit you with my ape on that, sir.
Oh, that's okay. That was fair.
And, um, I, I thought the, um, the walking, uh, away from the contract was off the board, too. I thought that what we were talking about was, out of the four, you're choosing this November one as the one you think that has the most promise, and that's the one we ought to go for.
That is the one I think we ought to go for. When, when we come back with more detailed, nailed-down numbers, you have, you will have a decision to make. That's all.
And Mr. Harrington's analysis stated that, given worst-case scenarios across the board, out of the four options, this one kept us in the best shape.
Correct.
Regardless of condition.
Correct.
When, uh, when do you think you'll be able to bring us something back that we can see whether it's acceptable or not? A month?
Yeah. Yes, sir. Sorry. Excuse the casual speech. I, I'm hoping in like a month, if not less. I, I, you know, my first call tomorrow is going to be to, for my first email is going to be to our friends at OUC and saying, "We need to get together real soon. What's your schedule like early next week?"
Well, the reason, I mean, that was a loaded question, and it was loaded in, in relationship to your, your comment that, uh, Indian River shores mediation may be May 1st. So, therefore, uh, we would need to know something, because we have, uh, made the agreement that we would tell them something on May 1st.
I'll, I'll be very specific. Backing up from your scheduled April 21st council meeting to the Monday preceding that week, that's April 13th, which I understand is the date that Tammy needs to have stuff for your agenda, I'm hoping to have whatever we're going to have by the end of the week before that, so I can get it to you on April 13th.
We'll meet whenever you need to.
Thank you.
I make a motion to authorize Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Harrington, and Mr. Wright to proceed with OUC negotiations on the November terms.
Second. Uh, do we want a voice vote on that, or do you want a roll call?
Voice vote is fine.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
It passes four to one. Is there further discussion on this matter? I mean, this is, as Mr. Wright said, there's millions of dollars of, over time.
Certainly, I thought it's, it's an item that's going to, yeah, asking for direction, that we certainly needed to have a clearer, uh, description and then a public comment, giving an update. And I certainly would have liked to have seen all the backup material with us at this time where we're being asked to make that decision.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fair. You know, the problem is that we're asking these three people, these three men, to negotiate, and they can't, we, we have the sunshine law. So, therefore, we're trusting them, and I'm hoping that they'll come back with something that you and I will both like. But I understand what you're saying. Further comment?
Just, uh, an important thing, and Chef has pointed out on several occasions, because he and I have talked about it. All of these options have a risk. And it's very, very important that we, as a city, understand what we're doing. We have a risk staying where we are, higher cost. We have a risk if we shorten the duration, which we're talking about now, because we go to market, nine years, what is the market going to? go to market, nine years, what is the market going to look like? It's very easy to say that we're just going to be in the market base, and so everybody will be happy, but that doesn't often happen. If we decided that we were going to walk on the thing, that contract has the maximum of that $50 million, and there's all kinds of convolutions to that, but it would be something that we'd look at. But we just want to make sure that everybody, and especially our customers, understand that it all takes a decision based on the best information that we can provide, and we will try to provide the best that we can acquire as we project into the future. I think it's a great opportunity now that we have the folks looking at our rate structures and our rates, Chef talking to OUC on our power supply contracts, and then we also have our optimization study going on at the same time. From a city's perspective, I think that you have just about as much professional help as you can get in trying to make this decision.
Yeah.
And it's not being done in Boston with redacted documents.
Well, Godspeed, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. With that, we'll open it to general public comment. Who would like to come forward? I don't see anybody, so I'll close public comment, I guess. We move on to the consent agenda. Would any member of council like to pull an item for further discussion? No one seems to.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes five, nothing. All right. We will move to public hearing ordinances, and each of these ordinances, which I will read, there are three of them tonight, are the final reading. Is that correct, Mrs. Vok?
Yes, sir.
They've been read once before.
They are final.
So if they're passed tonight, they have. All right. 4A1 is an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 76, Historic Preservation of the City of Vero Beach Code relating to historic properties eligible for ad valorem exemptions, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Tim McGary, the Director of Planning and Development. The ordinance before you is intended to expand the list of eligible properties that can receive an ad valorem tax for improvements to their historic property. And as I pointed out before, this ad valorem abatement is only city taxes involved. The eligibility list would be for those, it used to be for, the current ordinance is only for those that are our local designation, but this would expand it to those properties that are on the National Register, and more importantly, the properties that are inside the Neighborhood National Historic District at the Osceola Park, which would make them eligible also. So this draft ordinance has been recommended for approval by both the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Board and staff.
Ms. Turner, would you like to question, or any council member?
Yes, I do. I do have a few questions.
You have the floor.
In reading it, I guess it still isn't that clear. It is exemption from all their city ad valorem tax.
It is for the, it's ad valorem for the increase in improvement of the value. So if you have a $200,000 house increased by 100, that incremental 100,000, whatever that tax is on that, you would be the abatement for the 10.
It's just that incremental?
That incremental increase.
Okay, because, yeah, like I said, I still wasn't that clear. At this point, you said you'd be opening up additional properties. I think we had, what, 39 on the register now, or, and then how many numbers of properties?
I think there's 89 contributing in the Osceola District, and there are six or seven national, on the National Register that wouldn't, weren't eligible because they weren't on our local register. So we're increasing about, almost close to 100 properties would be made.
So we got, okay, so trying to get a total count of properties. And as far as cost, do we have any idea? What?
Well, we haven't had any takers yet, so we don't even have a track record, as I pointed out, I don't think.
But it's just on improvement, so I guess.
It's just on improvement, so I don't see this as being a significant impact. As I said, we're not having a lot of people rushing to the door on this one.
So we're just incentivizing people to?
Yes. It's one of the many tools, particularly in our older, it's another tool that can be used. And try to look at some other incentives we're looking at.
All motion to approve?
One second. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, Mr. Kramer.
I just want to say, I do live in that neighborhood, so I just want to make that clear.
Are you reclusive yourself? I'm just teasing.
No.
I was going to say, it was part of the comment.
I'm not planning any home improvement projects.
Do you want to second?
I will second.
All right. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Rold?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Okay. 4A3, a resolution of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 63, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements to the City of Vero Beach Code, clarifying text relating to calculation of parking requirements, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date requested by the Planning and Development Director. Staff comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance was to clean up some of the problems that we had over the outdoor dining, exemption of on-street or off-street parking for outdoor dining and retail display services. We cleaned up some other parts of it, so we believe the code is much more transparent now. We don't have to go through big arguments for hearings over what the code means, so this has been recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Board and staff.
Questions of council? Public comment? Seeing none, I close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Vok?
Mr. Rold?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Okay. 4A3, a resolution of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, repealing and replacing Resolution 2006-08, amending provisions to allow for the use of the tree planting fees to include the funding of beautification projects and activities approved by the City Council commencing January 20th, 2015, providing for an effective date requested by the Tree and Beautification Commission. Staff comment, I guess that's you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the Tree Commission has really been doing beautification projects all along. This is to give them the proper title and also the authority to do what they have been doing for many years, so it's more of an administration cleanup.
All right. Public comment? Either council questions or resolutions, as you see fit.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Mrs. Vok?
Mr. Rold?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
All right. This moves us to Resolutions. 4B1, a resolution for assistance 2015 under the Florida Inland Navigation District Waterways Assistance Program requested by the Public Works Director. Staff comment, please.
Yes, sir. This is for the restrooms. As you know, we have been talking about those. We received some funding in order to the engineering, which we did, and we looked at options, and the one is going to be the restoration of the existing restrooms and to upgrade it to the STEP program, so this will be one of our STEP projects.
Yes, and this restroom is at Bob Summers or at the boat ramp there, correct? Or at the dog park?
It's at Bob Summers Ball Field, and, but it'll be used primarily by both the boat ramp and the dog folks.
And the, and?
Excuse me, dog park.
The baseball, too. It will.
Yeah, the baseball people.
All right. Public comment? Seeing none, I close it. A motion or a question? Go ahead, Ms. Turner, by all means.
Mr. O'Connor, will we be seeing any increased maintenance costs for this facility?
Yes, ma'am, we will, because you have later on in the agenda the lease with the Bob Summers baseball field. In there, we have a provision that we will take over the maintenance and operation of this restroom upon the time that we do the investment and we open it up for the public. Now, we also have the option of not opening up to the public, but I don't think we're going to get a fine grant if we don't let the folks in boats.
No, I was going to say, that's the whole per diem.
So yes, ma'am, there will be additional maintenance.
This is something that really, it's a good project, and it's needed. We have a lot of people down there, and we need a good restroom, just like at the beaches or wherever else. It's a good project, in my opinion. I support it. Motion, I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Any further comment? Mrs. Vok?
Mr. Rold?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes four to one.
I just want to make a comment, just make sure that everybody in that area knows that the bathrooms are for use for everybody, because I know sometimes they get touchy as to who gets to use what.
Right now, they are not because they're part of the lease on the baseball field, and it's restricted. But once we make the investments, then it becomes public, and it will be the responsible party.
All right. That brings us to Resolution B2, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, abandoning all City of Vero Beach interests and portions of those certain three-foot side lot easements on lots 49 through 54, Block 22, and Lot 20 through 26, Block 34, Royal Park Plaque Number 7, which is recorded in Plat Book 1 at Page 36, of which easements were granted to the City of Vero Beach and recorded in deed book 98, Page 487 of the public records of Indian River County, Florida, requested by the Public Works Director. Staff comment, please.
Yes, sir. What we're doing is abandoning some three-foot easements that we no longer need or use and have never, but we're also obtaining a five-foot easement, and it really straightens up a neighborhood and a subdivision that were several plats over by the Vero Beach Country Club.
A public comment? Seeing none, I close public comment. What's the pleasure of council, please? Questions or a resolution?
Move for approval.
Second. Mrs. Vok?
Mr. Rold?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Yes, it passes five, nothing. Okay, that brings us to B3, a resolution for assistance 2015 under the Florida Inland Navigation District Waterway Assistance Program requested by the Public Works Director. Staff comment, please.
Yes, we were approached by some citizens who would like to build a fishing pier in memory of Cole Coppola. As you know, he was a young man that was killed by a traffic accident on the 17th Street Bridge, and his grandmother, and along with, well, we have their attorney here, if he would like to come up and make the presentation, but the bottom line is, is we would apply for the grants and the funding. They would do the fundraising to raise the money that would be the matching of this grant. This would be phase one, i.e., there'd be the engineering and the drawing for that. The family and friends would be part of that design, so we would make sure that we had it what they wanted. And then the second application for the funding would go obviously to the construction. But I do think we have people present that can give you a better.
Let me answer this question, Mr. O'Connor. Does this go south of the Little Spoil Island by Riverside Cafe, or what are you thinking about?
Actually, it is south. It's down toward the larger pavilion areas.
So it's before Veterans Island?
Monty could come up here and give you the exact location.
Yeah, I think we would like to know where it is, right?
Monty Falls Director of Public Works. We've worked with the applicant, Mr. Siegel, who's been real helpful with bringing all this stuff to us and helping us get the information together, and we've actually looked at several different locations to construct the fishing pier. And we looked at an area that, if you know where the Little Flower Pavilion is, out on the point, on, across from the restroom at Riverside Park, it'll be north of there. There's a picnic pavilion, I think it's about two picnic pavilions north of there, and it'll come off that west shore, and east, west shore of the river, and extend westward about 100 feet, and with a 50-foot T dock on the end. But it's north of that. It doesn't impact any of the activities that's going on in Memorial Island. It's north of there, so you won't see it from the Veterans Memorial Island.
Sir, would you like to come forward?
Barry Siegel. If you're used to seeing me here as an attorney, I'm really here just as a friend of the family, just so happens that I get to do that in my other life. But we're, my family as well, dear family friends with the Coppolas, who are with us tonight, really here, one, to just say thank you to the city. We approached Rob Slezak for recreation about the project. He and Mr. O'Connor got the dream team together, as far as we're concerned, to get this project moving. The, I mean, and it really has turned out to look like a perfect location for the project. There's just, everything falls into place, from restrooms, utilities, electricity, and good fishing, apparently, is what we're looking at. The fine grant will go a long way to helping this project come to fruition. We appreciate the city's support to it. We appreciate Monty Falls really has been outstanding. So, you know, it's just almost surprising had we not known of the character of the parties involved. So we're really very excited for the project. The family is committed to supporting the fundraising, but we've also got a ton of business and local support that is interested in doing it. As the project moves along, we'll be able to give you some more ideas, but we are looking to sell the naming rights to the various planks and the decks, so that people can put their names on those, and it should just be a good, happy community place and a safe place for people to go fishing.
Yeah, it sounds good. Do you envision a name for the pier itself? I mean, I think.
We're probably looking at the Cole Coppola Fishing Pier, the Cole Coppola Pier, so something along those lines.
And, Mr. O'Connor, are we going to be able to help with the bidding process if we sponsor the project for construction?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be sort of overseeing the entire grant program, because it'll really be a grant awarded to the city. The matching funds would come from the family. Also, this is going to be designed in such a way, there'll be no boat traffic, so this is going to be really a fishing pier, which is what they're designing it for.
Yeah, I think at most, there'll be a couple stairs down for safety purposes, that maybe a kayak, you know, may tend to tie up from time to time, but definitely no boat traffic. And it appears from staff that there won't be interference with existing boat traffic as well.
Right. Okay, sounds like a good project. Is there further public comment? Mr. Coppola, Mrs. Coppola, would you like to say anything? Might be appropriate. Dr. Coppola?
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm Nick Coppola. I'm not used to this, so I'm nervous, but I just, I'd love to say thank you to Barry and you for all the work, and we've met before, right, in man? Thank you guys for considering this. It means a lot to us and to Cole. Whatever we can do to help it along, we're glad to.
It'd be a beautiful memorial for you to commemorate your son.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those words.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mrs. Vok?
Mr. Rold?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes, passes five, nothing.
Before you go, Barry said he'd meet me out there tomorrow to start putting the pilings in. He's sitting in here this week.
All right. The next one may be a little more complicated. This is the first reading. It would be read the next time on May, what?
April 7th.
April seventh, I'm sorry, I'm losing the month here, thank you both. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending section sixty point one-one of Title Six, zoning ordinance, the code of the City of Vero Beach, relating to compliance with a zoning ordinance, providing for penalties for non-compliance, providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date, requested by the Planning and Development Director. Public hearing is to be April seventh, as we said a minute ago. Staff comment, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I got a little longer presentation than I did with the previous ones. In response to City Council's concerns, and those of the public concerning the civil penalties for violation of the city's prohibition on vacation rentals in residential zoning districts, the staff in coordination with the city attorney repaired this ordinance amending section sixty point eleven of the zoning code. Concerns have been raised at the current reduced civil penalty system, starting at fifty dollars for the first of violations insufficient to deter vacation rentals, and is not sufficiently high enough considering the weekly rents that may be charged for such unlawful uses. The basic problem is that violations such as vacation rentals are both difficult to detect and prosecute. The city citation process, which I try to summarize if you read the memo to the Planning and Zoning Board, is intended to address violations that are primarily correctable and not continuing, like some of these, the vacation rental violations. Most violations are easy to address and correct it, such as obtaining an after fact permit for construction, removal of an illegal sign, cleaning up the debris, mowing the lawn, or abating a swimming pool nuisance, which we've had. Under the city citation reduced penalty system, one is cited for violation of the civil penalty, one may pay the reduced penalty and correct the violation without further action. The intent of this citation penalty system is to bring compliance, not necessarily to punish the violator. It works well for the overwhelming majority of violations handled by code enforcement. However, unfortunately, it doesn't work as effectively with vacation rental violations. Vacation rental violations are a different animal altogether. A significant amount of revenue, and you can look on the internet, you're getting on the beach, twenty-five to five thousand dollars a week, may be gained from such use, very tempting to encourage violations. Therefore, the amount of potential civil penalties that may be assessed are hardly a deterrent for some. Couple this with the difficulty for the city code enforcement staff to detect these violations and spend the necessary time and resource to obtain sufficient evidence to sustain a case before both the code enforcement board and a court of law, it is right for some individuals to game the system through all sorts of subterfuge, every trick in the book, been there. Under the current citation process, a violator may get caught, pay the fifty-dollar fine, and come into compliance. Substantially, the violator may again get caught and pay a fine of a hundred for the repeat offense and come into compliance, meaning that they're temporarily closing down. And just as a side, a repeat violation can only be issued once they've been found guilty. And the only way they're found guilty is either they pay the fine, or the, or the code enforcement board fines them in violation, before they can get a repeat violation. As long as the violator brings the property into compliance by the date required and pays any fines, the violator won't be subject to daily accruing fine. However, for any repeat violation, and this has been that we follow, the violator will have no additional time to come into compliance. So normally, on the first violation, they have a ten-day period to come into compliance, which they can run it out. If they're still non-in compliance at time, the staff continues to visit the property, and they will bring it to the code enforcement board. But normally, they'd come into compliance, but we do have some that won't be coming into compliance. But if they're caught for a repeat, basically, that's it. So it'll be continuing penalties brought forward to the code enforcement board and in that regard. The code does allow for specific penalties, that's how we can do this. For instance, specimen trees are a five-hundred-dollar fine, boarding houses, if you have a boarding house, it's a five-hundred-dollar fine plus five-hundred dollars per day. So to address this problem, the city and I propose that the fine for a short-term rental violation be automatically assessed with a immediate five-hundred-dollar per offense sign. So that's way below, above the fifty-dollar starting thing. If it's a continuing violation, it'd be five-hundred dollars per day, and that would send a significant message across to a violator. This amount is the maximum penalty that is allowable under the current code, you can't do more. We have a doubling thing, but it's five-hundred dollars the max, it states in the code. Additionally, it was decided to expand this type of special fines to any uses not specifically land in a zoning district. We do have situations where single-family houses are being converted and all that. This is a similar type of unlawful use, may not be as lucrative for some people, but we feel this falls into the, into that same classification, so that the ordinance itself, the text amendment, does take that into account. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommend approval of this ordinance on March twelfth at their hearing. So I'm here to answer any specific questions you may have.
Right, council questions.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, this ordinance only is directed at the landowner, not the people that are participants in promoting this.
Right, that's what we get into, and you'd be surprised, because the one thing, you remember citations, you end up putting liens on property, we got to go after the property owner. And we've talked about this before, we weren't going to go after the, necessarily, the poor people coming down from up north type thing, which could be done, but that isn't it. So we've done it, that is the way that we've handled it. And I'll tell you, part of the problem we're getting into, and I've asked our people to look into it, is we do have some inscrupulous real estate people who are, who are not telling their owners what they're doing and advertising for short term when they really thought they were doing long term. So that's the kind of thing that's going on, and I think that's, see, I believe that that would be an ethical violation of state law.
That's the problem that I have, is that, you know, some of these owners, I mean, they just want to get, get things squared away, and if they get caught in a short-term rental when they were told it was long term, they're fined five-hundred dollars right off the bat.
Well, part of.
The real estate agent goes free.
Well, that, well, there's some other, some issues with the real estate agent, but clearly, if someone's caught in a situation, they can go to the code enforcement board, they may have a special situation that the code enforcement board has some authority to look at those kind of extenuating circumstances, not for the staff to make that decision.
So there is some lien.
There is, well, it's how the code enforcement board, yes, it's outside our hands, yes.
Okay.
Public comment, please, is there a public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Further questions, Mrs. Turner?
Move for public hearing on April the seventh.
Second.
Mrs. Vock.
Mr. Old.
Yes.
Ms. Graves.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mayor Winger.
Yes, it passes five, nothing. All right, that brings us to five B, an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, amending section seventy-eight dash sixty-three and seventy-eight dash eighty-three in chapter seventy-eight of the Code of the City of Vero Beach relating to sanitary sewers, septic systems, septic tank affluent pumps, step parent, unparent, systems for providing for conflict and severability, providing for codification, providing for effective date requested by the water and sewer director. Public hearing on this will be April seventh. Staff comment, please.
Mayor, I'll address this. I worked with Rob, and we knew from the start, when this was first adopted, that we'd be needing to come back as it's fine tuned, as this program rolls out, finding the things that we need to tweak. So basically, what we're trying to do here is address some more of the particulars of the program, and in particular, we needed to clarify the ownership of each of these step system facilities. They will be a city facility located on private property typically. It's kind of like, my best example would be a developer often, or a property owner will often build a lift station, and then turn it over to the city to operate and to maintain. This is very similar. The difference is, the property owners are hiring the contractor to install the components, so we wanted to address the liability and the issues with the, with the, these contractors, we call them, you know, authorized installers, they have to get training, they have to have insurance, and basically, Rob would ride hurt on them and make sure that only these authorized people are installing the city's equipment for these step system facilities on the different properties. And we also wanted, and also because of the ownership, because we wanted to address the tax issues, the sales tax issues, because it's city equipment being installed for a city facility, it does save the property owners a little bit of money on sales tax. The other issue was, again, the installers trying to address that we had competent people that were trained to deal with this kind of equipment and install it, they're licensed and insured. And then also, the last thing was to give, to clarify the payment options, they are getting a discount if they pay in advance, within a certain amount of time, and after that, or anybody now, they could elect to do a lien instead. Starting out, we would be doing special assessment liens, which would have to be individually, just one, one hearing on each one of the resolutions for each property. In the future, working with Cindy, we do hope to maybe evolve that into a ad verum, not non-ad verum, special assessment on the tax bill, but that's still in the works. So we would be coming back with something on that, too. But unless Rob has something to add, I think the city manager and I both recommend that we go ahead and move this to public hearing.
Yes. I have, I have one, I have one comment and one question, but if you go to page three, A two, it says that within seventy-five days after a public sewer becomes available for connection to a property served by a private wastewater disposable system, the property owner shall directly connect the building sewer to the public sewer in compliance. And really, that's not true of the step system, is it?
No, it's not, and this is already in the code, and is pre-existing, but it does not apply to the step.
That applied for somebody that a gravity sewer system was installed or existed in front of their property.
Well, it doesn't need clarification, so that that's clear, I guess is my point. I understand the.
It does, it comes in the section above, and then step falls in below it.
We can make that modification.
If you read the whole thing, maybe you only have a portion of it, but if you read the whole core code as it exists, that is for private wastewater disposal systems, and then when you go below it, you start the step system process where they fall under.
I still like Jim's approach better.
Yeah, we can look at it, and do addition in there that the step program's not covered under the.
And if you go on the same page, A four, on page three, commencing January first, two thousand sixteen, each owner of a private wastewater disposable system shall cause the pump out of the system on a regular frequency not to exceed every five years. I believe that is state law, anyway, but that is something that will come into, in other words, if someone maintains a septic tank, the way I read it, it'll have to be pumped out every five years, is that correct or incorrect?
That is correct, as a matter of fact, that was covered at all of our public meetings.
I understand that. I just, I'm just flagging it, and how, when does that start? In other words, you know, somebody may have had it pumped a year ago, ten years ago, some of them twenty years ago, how are you going to know all that? I mean, is it, are you going to wait five years, and then anybody that hasn't had it pumped, we're going to pump, or what are you going to do?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll track who's actually commencing on January first, we'll start commencing, we'll start tracking who has pumped it out, and right prior to the five-year time clock expiring, we'll send notification out thirty days or sixty days in advance that says, we noticed you haven't pumped your system in the last five years, and you're required to.
You'll have some that'll be up to thirty years. Mrs. Turner, you have a question?
I do, here. On page two of thirteen, under the step descriptions, why did y'all delete those items? Is it comprised of a pump vault, interceptor tanks, pump panels, and associated electrical wiring, and they deleted that, and we?
Yeah, we just didn't feel that, at least I didn't, Rob and I didn't really talk about that particular item, but I thought we were just going into too much detail there. It's a pump system, that's what it is, and not every single installation will be identical. I think Rob has tried to clarify that for me, that some will be different.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it just depends on what's existing and what gets installed.
Originally, we listed the items, and then Wayne was like, well, let's just call it a pump, you know, call it what it is.
A pump system.
Pump system, and that way it's generic enough to say it's a.
It'll cover whatever happens on a particular property.
Curious as to what the process is for this authorized step system installer?
We actually had them trained today, and then there's two more that'll be trained tomorrow, but really, it's anybody that's a septic tank contractor, they have to be a licensed septic tank contractor. And then we had both Orenco and Roth Tanks in town, they were here today, they were supposed to be doing a training for our staff tomorrow, but they're also going to be doing two septic tank contractors that forgot that today was training day and called us right afterwards, so we're fitting them in in the morning. But they went through a presentation of how to install a tank, and, you know, compaction efforts, all those general requirements for warranty efforts, for warranty requirements and everything else, and then they receive a certificate from Roth Tank that they're certified. And then for Orenco, very similar, they went through all the installs, and where to put adhesives, and how to bolt down the tops, and all the other stuff, and the wiring diagrams, and then they'll get a certificate. So we will have a installer application, and it's very simple. The main thing to have the installer application for is, one, the tax purposes, and two, so that we have a record and we have a copy of insurance that they're picking up our parts and pieces and transporting them to a job and installing them. So if they damage them along the way, they're responsible for paying for it. And that's really why the whole thing came about, but very simple, little, one-page application that they will fill out, that we will sign off on, we'll attach the certificates that Roth gave them, attach the certificate of Orenco, get a copy of their state certification that they can, they're certified to install tanks, and a copy of their insurance. And that's pretty much going to be the permit, and then they're good from that point forward.
Right, and then the city, the city training they're talking about, that is the training that's being provided by the Roth, by the suppliers of the equipment itself.
And we'll have that training here onsite once a year, they're required to provide it twice a year, so if an installer or somebody else missed ours, well, they're going to have to pay the airfare out to Oregon to get trained, but at least we provide the training if some, if it was missed and they want to go out there and get the training.
That's great, thank you.
I actually have a follow-up to Ms. Turner's question, when we were talking about how each system's going to be slightly different, but do we have a clear delineation for people of where their responsibility ends and ours begins? Like, if it happens from here forward, that's on the homeowner, from here on, that's us, and our, I just want to make sure that's really clear.
Yes, they're responsible for the electric wire from their house out to the panel, and then we take everything from there. They're responsible for their internal plumbing, all the way to the tank, and then we take everything from there. Now, if they leave an existing septic tank in place, they're required, they're responsible for that existing septic tank to the next tank that is our pump chamber. Most of them, we've been explaining to them in detail that it's in your best effort for the cost right now, the small cost right now, to probably replace the entire system, especially if it's forty or fifty years old, you know, replace everything, and then it becomes our responsibility.
Okay.
So you're seeing a lot of those individuals going that route. Some are going with just the original little pump chamber, if their house is only twenty years old and the tank is fine, then they should be fine.
Are we, is that in writing, in black and white anywhere, so people have a reference point and say, oh, I never understood that that's what you meant?
In the ordinance itself, when you read the whole full, I mean, we just amended it, so you're just seeing the amended part, but when you read the whole thing in its entirety, it talks about the homeowner's responsibilities and the city's responsibilities for the whole process of installation and everything else, and maintenance purposes.
Okay, great.
And when they apply, they're given a copy of the entire ordinance, and they're agreeing to abide by the ordinance, as far as their responsibilities, the city's responsibilities and what have you.
Okay, thank you.
And moving forward, the only thing you're going to see, that we can't seem to get around, but you'll see, anybody that wants to finance will have to come back through council as a resolution list stating these people are financing. And then also, what you'll see is anybody, the easements that are going to be, documents will be coming through once a month or something like that, until we'll.
So council will be determining whether or not people can finance individually?
No, it's kind of an after the fact.
Okay.
Thing, we don't want.
Just to secure the amount that they're going to pay over time.
Okay.
We establish a lien through a special assessment resolution.
And the same with the easement, we're trying to create something that's generic enough, that's a one-page document, and the reason we want to do it is so that if you own a home, you put a step system in, the next person that comes to buy it, there's a legal document that's going to show up somewhere that says you have a step system on your property, and there's an easement. Otherwise, you could be buying something, and then two years later go, well, what is this thing that's in my front yard? I didn't buy that, I didn't have any record of it. So we're going through those little minor details yet.
How many, do you have indications of people who've signed up? How many are interested at this point?
Well, we have a hundred and fifty in the Bethel Creek area, and talking with the septic tank contractors, who are actually kind of our sales force, because they're out there knocking on the doors, I'd say you're over twenty people that already have contracts signed for them.
Mr. Mayor, you go up in the neighborhood, and you will see a sign, reliable plumbing, this is a step program project. And so they're putting the signs in the yards for us all around in that area.
And in fact, actually, the Bethel, the next area, the Live Oak area, I had one resident that called, wanted the information on it, and now she needs twenty more copies for her neighbors on her streets that she's out selling it to the neighbors. So, you know, it's actually become quite good, I mean, the word is out there, it's a very positive, you're still going to have a few of them that, that, you know, are going to be against anything. But then you have some people that, some, it's a financial thing, you know, I've talked with them, and really, even our incentives, the break-even point is probably about seven years. So if you think your system is going to have a problem within seven years, then it would make sense to take advantage of the, but if you just had it replaced last year, and it's good for ten or twenty, then if you're looking at it from only the financial standpoint, they can roll the dice and go from there, so.
Wayne, are you going to have another community workshop for the Live Oak and Con?
Yes, we will, I think we'll do it smaller, because the last time, you get a lot of detailed questions, it seems to be annoying to other people, and it just, it got too much, you know, and some people don't want, they're just there for the general, and so I think what we'll do is break it up over like three nights, and, because it is a larger area, too, and then have it over like a three-night period in little sections.
When are you envisioning, for a month? I know it's off sometime, but.
Probably June, we'll do those, May-June.
Okay, public comment, I didn't open it for that. I see none, so I'll close public comment. Further questions from?
Motion to approve for April seventh.
Second.
Mrs. Vock.
Mr. Old.
Yes.
Ms. Graves.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mayor Winger.
Yes, passes five, nothing. Okay, that brings us to city clerks matters.
Yes, sir, I was just bringing up our summer city council meetings. It's been customary to cancel our first meeting in July and our first meeting in August, and just want to see if council wants to do that again this year.
But we do have the workshop, July?
Yes, sir, July thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, our budget hearings.
Is that agreeable with everyone?
Sure. I think it's acceptable, and I'd like to suggest that making the July twenty-first I think it's acceptable. I'd like to suggest that making the July 21st and the August 18th meeting then day meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's agreeable.
Agreeable.
That's agreeable to everyone.
Can we make one a day and one an evening?
I'm just thinking since we're going to have one less meeting that month, that we might have more items and to have it in the morning.
I know, but that gives, that takes away two opportunities for people who work to comment on things that are going on.
Are you okay with that? The August one at night and then the July one in the morning? And I don't care.
That's fine.
Okay, she says it's fine.
Is it, just out of curiosity, I mean, could we start before six, just so it's, we don't run so darn late?
We're doing--
The point is to have people after work to be available. That's why you start at six.
I just don't want to go to midnight.
No, so then--
You're right, it could be--
So then let's have, so then let's have both morning meetings.
Okay.
So we could, as my initial motion, to leave, you know, for both morning meetings.
Is, Ms. Graves, can you live with that?
Well, no.
That's the opposite of exactly what I asked, so.
Well, I'd rather have the evening meeting if we have to go late, so I--
We can't go past 11:00 PM based on our code, so I'll get you on before midnight.
One o'clock?
But then you're, you're not letting people who work come and comment on city business.
Well, probably won't be done till, you know, five. I mean--
We're making a mountain out of a bowl here. You want to flip the coin?
Well, keep it both, keep it both morning meetings. So take a vote. I make a motion that we have both morning meetings, the July 21st and August 18th.
Second. Dice for Alaska, second, and we don't get one. I'm perfectly happy to have a second. Matter of me one or another. No second, so it's going to be one evening, one morning. That's--
So just so I'm clear, the July 21st will be a day meeting and the August 18th will be a night meeting.
You know, sorry about that. Okay, further things for the city clerk?
No, sir, that's it.
City manager, baseball?
Yes, we have a lease. It's similar to the lease that we have with the baseball program over on the mainland, and this is for the Bob Summersfield. As I say, that we did make notation of the restrooms. They will be maintaining them up until the time we make the investment in them because they are using them. But it's a similar type of lease, and we would recommend this lease go with the program.
Hold a comment.
Questions?
Question, go ahead.
How do we determine a five-year period?
I believe, Rob, was the five-year just sort of a negotiated time? There was just a negotiated period?
Same thing we did for Michael Field.
For Michael Field, it's the same period?
Yeah.
My concern in this area is parking. We have a very popular dog park. We have just done repairs and improvements at McWilliams at our boat, on a boat landing. And now we're going to be having baseball in this area as well. I guess I'd like to know kind of what, you know, what the usage is going to be, and has anybody done a parking study? I mean, we're looking at a five-year commitment in this area.
We're actually using it for baseball now, but I'm sure people--
Yeah, we have--
Identify yourself.
Yes, I'm George Young from 658 Browning Terrace.
Thank you.
And we have been using the facility for the last almost three months now, practicing out there with the teams. And there has not been a problem with the parking, with the dog park or the Marina area. And we've had a great relationship already with the dog park people. They've come over and, you know, we're really happy to see that we were over there using the facility. And they were, there hasn't been any problem with the parking at all.
Okay, if all you're doing is practicing right now, we're still not getting to my point. How often is it going to be used? What times a day? When are you going to have games? You know, would we have the congestion?
Well, most of our games will be at nighttime.
Okay.
Okay, so at that point in time, there's not--
Hopefully it shouldn't be with the boat yet. We shouldn't have a problem with the boat.
Or the dog park, because the dog park is closed at night. Also, as far as practice is concerned, we do most of our practices at night because the kids are in school. So there's not going to be, during the daytime, that they'll be out there until after they get out. And that's probably between four and five and six o'clock when the coaches and all get there.
At school, yeah.
Right.
And the schedule of the use, this is something that's going to be year-round use?
It will be year-round, and we'll have signs on the fences that if anybody wants to come in and use the park, when it's, the baseball park, when it's not being used, they just call a phone number and we can work something out with them.
Any more questions?
I mean, I think it's great. I love what you've done with the baseball program. Once again, I'm just a little reluctant to approve a lease without having had some study of the parking area and, you know, projections. And here we are making another five-year commitment, you know, for space.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept it.
One second.
Ms. Vok.
Mr. Old.
Yes.
Ms. Graves.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner.
No.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mayor Winger.
Yes, passes four to one. I'm glad to have a ballpark there.
Oh, I am too.
No, I'm going to say you don't. I don't.
I just like to see a study so that we're not creating another bottleneck or a problem.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. It's just I have an emotional attachment. My family has that a long time.
Let me put it from an administrative standpoint. I have somebody cutting the grass.
Yeah, I know.
So where we may take out the restroom, we don't have to worry about the grass.
Peace. We're at peace. Are you happy?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for giving it.
Good luck to you.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I do agree. Somewhere along the line, we got to, we got to start looking at parking because it seems as though we're, you know, on the east or west side of Live Oak, we've got a lot of people parking there. So somewhere along the line, we got to think about how we're going to--
Well, we have put some parking requirements on the dog park, and they need to do some type of surfacing in there. They have agreed to do some limited surfacing of parking in that area. The dog park is really our highest demand for parking at this particular time. But it is part of their lease that they would provide parking, and they have adequate space outside of the fence.
So thanks for their success. And I think that's a real credit to them, and I think it will be to the, you know, to the softball, baseball, and, you know.
It has become a major asset to us out there. And as George Young said, that they've welcomed with open arms the baseball folks, and so it's really worked. And the baseball, when they run the lights, it gives the dog people a little more time out on their park. And so it's helped in that respect as well. So it's, it has, it's working very well right now in the way they're doing it.
Mr. Kramer's right. It may not work into the future, but at least it's, it could be a problem, but it may be a good problem.
Well, the good thing is, is five years is relatively short too, so it gives us some time to--
We have many more cars than the island and it's going to sink, but anyway.
Well, and speaking of that, now, we do have this committee that I'm working with, and that committee seems to change faces about every meeting we have. But talking and trying to address this parking issue up and down Ocean Drive and especially Sexton Plaza, if you've noticed, we've changed all the signage out down there. We've done some other things that have been recommended by the merchants in the area. We've also included Main Street into this discussion. So we are looking at 14th, because if you look at 14th Avenue on the, any of those nights that they have activities there, and the artists, as an example, are paying for the buses to bring people out of that parking lot. And I think we've covered it before, but that bus gets crowded and that parking lot gets crowded. Unfortunately, we don't have quite that access at the, on Ocean Drive, but it's, it's amazing how many people are still milling, milling around. And it seems like our season is getting longer and longer. Success to the Chamber of Commerce for their--
We've been discovered. We need smaller cars. Anyway, post office, post office, Jim.
Yes, the post office lease is in Wayne's hands, but I personally have come to grips with the pricing and the terms and the conditions. There are a couple of things that Wayne just wants to make sure that I know and understand before I make a recommendation to you all. But to me, it's a very good lease. It gives us a five years at about $120,000 a year per year. Then it goes to $131 per year. After that five years, if they want to renew the option, they have an out in two years to terminate the lease. But it appears that this is a facility they seem to like, so I think it's, it's a good one in that respect. And just put it in perspective, we're getting about $15,000 a year right now on the lease.
Further questions of council or the city manager, please?
I just have one. You know, we got an email today about someone that was talking about lifesaving devices on the beach. And one of the things that really kind of struck me was that you have people that are actually willing to pledge money to do a project within the city. I guess my question is, if somebody wants to do that kind of a project, would, is it, is it a possibility that we could put lifesaving devices out there? I mean, one of the things that really bothers me is that somebody says, you know, if they, if they see somebody drowning, that they're going to swim out and save them. And that usually ends up being not one person drowning, but two people drowning.
Yes, sir. I would recommend that, you know, putting them at the city parks would be fine, but I think what that email was talking about is putting them up and down the beach. I think they would need to get with the private property owners that face that. For example, if I was the Vero Beach Hotel and Spa, I'm not sure I'd want to post it in there and having my guests going out and trying to save people that are out in the ocean. And so that, it takes on a whole new thing.
And I'll be honest with you, right now, you have protection by statute, which we litigated all the way to the Fourth District Court of Appeal on the drowning of the young man at the south, south of the South Beach Park. We got sued anyway, even though it wasn't off of the city's beach. Right now, you have protection for anything that's naturally occurring in the ocean, riptides, sharks, whatever it is, we have protection, city's not, not, not responsible. If you affirmatively do something, like you affirmatively start providing equipment for someone to use, say, when we don't have a lifeguard around, or a lifeguard that is negligent in the way they try to save somebody and they injure the person, or the device injures the person, now you do have some liability. So you're increasing liability issues rather than really helping protect the, you know, as far as the city's liability goes. Now, will it save lives? Obviously, maybe it will. But it does add to your risk if you start providing things like that.
Well, if you have someone who has no idea how to work a current, grabbing something, thinking that'll work, and going into a rip current, now you've got two people out there. I mean, I, that's great that they want to do that.
Do we know what kind of equipment they're talking about?
I would, I would think lifesaving rings.
Yeah. You know, I don't know. I mean, that'd be the council's call.
And I believe the way it was described, like they put a pole and put, hang them on the side or something.
Well, I mean, it sounds like they can work with the private property owners along the beach.
Yeah, that, that would even be the best.
Okay.
But again, you know, in our parks, if they wish to put lifesaving rings, I'm not sure that we would be taking on too much risk for that, but--
Further questions of city manager? I have a question of the city attorney. Have you looked at the, I'll preface this. I talked to Mr. Gilmore, who's Mayor of Sebastian, and he's going to meeting, I think he said it was Friday, you know, pushing forward with membership of the four cities, if the four cities agree, of course, we would all have to agree, on the Indian River Coalition, whatever you want to call it. And we don't know whether that will come to be or not, but we do have an interlocal somebody came up with. Are you looking at that, Wayne?
Yes, the city manager gave that to me, and I looked at it, and I had a lot of comments about. There's, and I thought I was going to get a call or contact from the Sebastian City Attorney, Bob Ginsburg. I know he's part-time up there, but I did correspond with their city manager, the city manager up there about, I'd really value Bob. Bob, if you don't know, was the county attorney for Miami-Dade County for like 30 years, and he works part-time up here for, for Sebastian. So he's got a wealth of knowledge about interlocal type agreements. There's a couple of different statutes. The one that they chose to put this under, if they stay under the Interlocal Governmental Cooperation Act or whatever, the exact wording, I don't remember. But if they stay under that, there's quite a bit more that will have to go into that agreement, is what I reckon.
You know, to cut the thing short, I mean, I'd be happy if you said that if this thing comes to be, that you are working with him specifically, because Sebastian seems to be the one pushing this, to come up with something for city council either approve or disapprove, as the case may be.
Right.
Phil's mayor is also pretty active in this effort as well.
Well, my point was, there's, the next subsection in that statute is just a simpler one to follow. And I think it may do, but I have to talk to Bob and make sure--
But you'll proceed so that if it comes to be, that we'll have something to either accept or not accept.
Right.
Okay. I don't have further questions of the city attorney. Is anyone else? Okay, that brings us to individual council member matters. Is there anything before that? I guess not. I've been, was traveling to my job for the last 10 days, so I have nothing. Mr. Kramer?
Goodness gracious, had an awfully busy last couple of weeks. Did opening day for girls softball, absolutely wonderful group. And we did the St. Patrick's Day parade. The weather was fairly generous to us. We thought we were going to get rained out. Interestingly enough, we had the Business Improvement District meeting, and a lot of the conversation was surrounding the busing. Apparently, the parking issues have now reached 14th Avenue, and busing is becoming a possibility for, for helping out the, the parking issues, especially around the gallery strolls and the downtown events. The MPO meeting was actually a really good meeting. If you happen to see Eric Menger, ask him about the possibility of us getting passenger service back into Vero Beach. Apparently, there's three airlines that are considering bringing passenger service back to Vero Beach. We hope that we might be able to get one of them. Under the Oaks was a, was a great success. Really enjoyed that. I got talked into buying some stuff, so I've got to find some new wall space. And finally, Churchill Coast Lega Cities meeting. Interestingly enough, we did talk about the Indian River Lagoon Council and got a resolution passed, and we had all the cities in support of that. It was very well.
Mrs. Turner?
Well, I too have been traveling, and it's always eye-opening when you return from a trip and you get to Vero Beach, and it helps you remember, you know, what a special place this is and how lucky we are to call Vero Beach your home. Would like to remind everybody, on Monday, the ninth, Monday at 9:00, Castle will be having, placing flags for children that have lost their lives to child abuse, through abuse. And it'll be on 17th Street at 623, right at Sixth Avenue there.
Ms. Graves?
Just want to remind people about Downtown Friday, Main Street, and I will see everyone on the 25th at 9:30, correct?
Yes, sir.
Everyone at that table down there for our workshop.
Yeah, what are the rules of that thing, Mrs. Vok? Where do we sit and--
I thought we just, the council would sit on the workshop and--
Oh, okay.
Make it pretty casual. Sit at the table.
Mr. Old?
I've had relatives in town, which has been fun celebrating Vero Beach. They enjoy it a lot, and it's fun to show off. And it's been a good few weeks.
All right, with that, motion adjourned. Okay, we stand adjourned.